I would like to run through some housekeeping arrangements. Please note that this meeting has been recorded and live streamed to the council's YouTube channel. The stream will be available to watch after the meeting has ended. This is the first time that an in-person full council meeting of Charmwood Borough Council has been livestreamed. By attending the meeting, you are giving your consent to being filmed. A notice with further information has been provided in the public gallery. Councillors and officers are using new audiovisual equipment, so please be patient with meeting participants and officers as they get used to the new technology. As Mayor, I have agreed that members should remain seated while speaking at this meeting to ensure good sound quality. Under the openness of local government bodies' regulations, people may film, record, tweet or blog this meeting, and this is outside the council's control. I would also like to remind councillors and the other people attending the meeting that the fire exits are to the rear and side of the room. There are no fire alarms tests planned for this evening. Could I also ask that everyone turns off their mobile phones or switches them to silence so that the meeting isn't disturbed? I have had apologies from Honorary Alderman, Bush, Day and Tormey. I've also had apologies from the following councillors: councillor Deborah Taylor and councillor Beverley Gray. Are there any other apologies?
Councillor Harper-Davis.
Councillor Harper-Davis, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Fox, please.
Councillor Fox, thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
I will now move on to item two, disclosures of pecuniary interests and other registrable and non-registrable interests. For information, disclosable pecuniary interests and registrable interests relate to entries that are included or should be included on a councillor's register of interests. Non-registrable interests relate to any other matters. I will now call on the Chief Executive to report on disclosures of interest in the business to be considered at this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've had no disclosures made prior to the meeting. Are there any from the floor? Councillor Jolmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to disclose an interest in 8.1 as an LGA peer member. Thank you.
That's for the next meeting. It's for the next meeting.
Okay.
Councillor Tillotson's in the voted as well.
Councillor Tillotson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 9.1, as a former recipient of winter fuel payments.
Those disclosures are for the following meeting, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. Okay. Can we make sure any disclosures for this meeting are the ones that are coming up now for the next meeting, which will have a separate one introduction? All right. Thank you. Item three is to consider the confirmance of the title of honorary older woman, Dr Jill Vincent. I call on councillor Sandy Forrest to move the conferring upon Dr Jill Vincent the title of honorary older woman.
And I notice that councillors are not included, ladies and gentlemen. I move that pursuant to the provisions of section 249 brackets of the Local Government Act 1972, that Dr Jill Vincent hereby admitted, to be hereby admitted honorary Alderman of the borough in recognition of her eminent services to the borough and its people. I have a mercifully short speech to make. Fellow councillors, honoured guests, Madam Mayor, I have known Jill for more years than either of us would care to acknowledge, and I am deeply honoured on this occasion to propose Dr Jill Vincent to be made honorary Alderman for the Borough of Charmwood. Jill is a London girl originally, and it was a family posting to a position at the Art College that brought her to Loughborough, and it was here that she raised her family of four. Jill has had a distinguished academic career, rising to be, and I hope I get this right, Assistant Director of the Centre for Research in Social Policy at the University of Loughborough, including research for the Art in Prisons schemes. And it was there that I first came to know of Jill's work in the prison system. She was a Borough councillor between 1995 and 2011, representing Southfields Ward, and was a member of the Labour Cabinet at that time that pedestrianised the marketplace and introduced the new waste cycling scheme to the borough, Jill being lead for Environment. Her main claim to fame at this time, however, was the sock man. Jill, along with a small working party, commissioned the sock man as a piece of public art suitable for Loughborough marketplace and as a tribute to the textile history of the borough. There was an outcry. There were even letters sent to the Echo. What the people wanted, they said, was a pretty girl in a nice dress to represent Loughborough's textile heritage. What they got was the sock man. Not entirely welcome at the time, however. I hope you will agree with me that Jill and her team were right. The sock man is now iconic, and I suggest that there would now be an outcry if we tried to remove him. We've all become very fond of him. And if you look, one of his toes is now shiny as people rub it for luck as they go past. In her last year on the council, Jill was mayor with her daughter Emma as mayoress. And Jill has reminded me that in this year, the borough, or the leadership of the borough, was dominated by women, with a female mayor and mayoress, Jill and Emma, Nicky Morgan as our MP, Shirley Price, Vice-Chancellor of the university, female president of the Students' Union, and the Reverend Wendy Dalrymple, Rector of Loughborough Parish Church. A monstrous regimen of women indeed. After her retirement from the council, Jill did not rest on her laurels. She was a governor at Loughborough College from 2011 to 2019 and is still a co-opted member of one of the college's committees. Jill is also a founder member of the borough's asylum seekers and refugee network, which has been active since November of last year, but already has 40 members in the network. However, the project chosen, the project closest to Jill's heart and time and energy is, of course, the Generator, which on completion will be an arts and cultural centre that the borough can be proud of. It will be a place of inspiration, I think, to very many people. Jill is the director of this CIC, and the project, after 10 years of ceaseless work, is nearing completion and will hopefully in the autumn of next year. I move that Dr Jill Vincent be made honorary Alderman of this borough. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
I call on councillor Corey Lowesley to second the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen and councillors, I second the motion that pursuant to provisions section 249 of the Local Government Act 1972, that Dr Jill Vincent be hereby admitted honorary older woman of the borough in recognition of her eminent services to the borough and its people. I too have a few short words to say. I'll try not to repeat too much of what councillor Forrest said so eloquently. I first got to know Jill in the run-up to my own election last year. From the very first moment she introduced herself, I could see that she had an unusual energy and enthusiasm for causes that were important to her. She explained to me her work on the Generator project in ardent detail. She extolled its virtues. It was very apparent that her passion came from a place of great affection for her home, the Borough of Charmwood and Loughborough in particular. This drive and dedication is not a new thing. As councillor Forrest said, Jill represented my own ward of Loughborough Southfields during her time as a Borough councillor. And in speaking to residents, it is remarkable the impression she made on them, despite leaving office so many years ago. In speaking to Jill in my own capacity as a ward councillor, it is clear that she still has a keen eye for civic service and is uniquely in tune with the daily rhythm of Loughborough town. If it had been left solely to me to decide who we might make, older man or older woman, at this special meeting tonight, there would have been one shining standout choice amongst a field of strong options. Conferring this honour on Dr Jill Vincent is a no-brainer. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
If any councillors would like to speak, please press your buttons. Okay, so I call on councillor Sandy Forrest to sum up, please.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I can only repeat what I have said earlier and have been seconded so capably by councillor Corey Lowesley that we hereby appoint Jill Vincent as an honorary Alderman of this borough. Thank you.
I'm now putting the motion to the vote. Could you please use your consoles now, please? Okay, so... Okay, then vote now, please. It's been completed, it's unanimous. So congratulations, Dr Jill Vincent. Please come forward and be presented with your unofficial honorary older woman's robe, scroll and medallion. They allow me to say a few words, so I will, as is my wont. Madam Mayor, councillors, family and friends of mine, Pauline and family and friends of Pauline's. Thank you. It is an honour, and I'm utterly delighted to be here and addressing you in this new role that you've so kindly given to me. I consider myself a very fortunate woman. My first love coming out of school was to go to art college, which I did for four years. It was four years in those days. And fortunately, my passion for the arts has followed me as a thread through my life. As you heard, when I was at home looking after children, I did some teaching. I taught evening classes in fine art, drawing, painting. Yes, as part of my research life, I worked with arts in prisons. And since then, of course, there's been the Generator, which has taken up an inordinate amount of my life, but with great joy, because we were a fundraising group for some many years, probably eight or 10 years we've been fundraising. We've got the money, the builders are in the Generator, and we will have an arts and culture centre for Loughborough and for Charmwood, which I think is something we want, something we need. We did crowdfunding, and I tell you, it was nice seeing the money coming in, but my goodness, it was nice to see the remarks that came with the money, because people want it to happen, and we are joyful that it will happen. So whilst my employment is concerned, and I had quite a substantial working life, it linked absolutely with my commitment to social engagement and justice and the things that I mind about as much as I mind about the arts. So my research career, as you heard, was within social policy. So that means you're looking at housing and homelessness, you're looking at benefits, you're looking at all the things that are troubling to people, because in the main, that's what gets researched. And so that research life lined up with my political life and with the kinds of issues that I've been engaged with since I left work, paid work, that is. So things like the asylum seekers and refugees network that we've developed. And, oh, and also, which I suppose is more arts and heritage, the Heritage Open Weekend that we did this year and which will happen again next year, because that was, again, something quite successful. So that's the end of talking about things that I've done. I'm just utterly delighted to be here, to have this honour and say thank you again to all of you. It's the kindest and nicest thing that's happened for a long while, and thank you so much. Thank you. Item four is to consider the confirmance of the title of honorary older woman, Mrs Pauline Ransom. I call on councillor Fryer to move the conferring upon Mrs Pauline Ransom the title of honorary older woman.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors. I move that pursuant to the provisions of section 249 brackets one of the Local Government Act 1972, that Mrs Pauline Ransom be hereby admitted honorary older woman of the borough of the borough in recognition of her eminent services to the borough and its people. First of all, I would like to say how proud I am to propose Pauline as one of the council's new older women. Pauline came to England as she had been does, working in London after first of all going to join an older sister in Guernsey as a nurse cadet. After some years, she moved to Yorkshire with two young children. She met Trevor through scouts. They married and their son, John, who was born. Trevor worked for a company that produced animal feed products. Eventually, he worked for a company named Paul's, situated on the outskirts of Shetshed. The family then all moved into a house in Burton-on-the-Wolds. That is where they met Robert Shields. Pauline continued to work as a nurse in various capacities, including as a senior nurse in operating theatres and helping out in various surgeries. Their children thrived and are now all happily married with children of their own. They are with us this evening. Pauline and I first met just about eight weeks before the two thousand and three council elections, put together by Robert Shields. On the face of it, we were an unlikely pair. Pauline, blonde, Irish and quite small, me, tall, darker and really very English. However, we hit it off immediately. Pauline lives just around the corner from me and there was, and still is, many get-togethers over the odd drink, putting the world to rights and working in tandem for the residents of Barrow. Pauline was sadly piped to the post in two thousand and three, but was elected that year to the parish council whilst I was elected to CBC. In two thousand and seven, eleven, fifteen and nineteen, we were both elected to Charmwood Borough Council. The ladies of Barrow became a force for good and worked very hard together. Pauline instigated the setting up of the PPG in Barrow, the Wellbeing Centre and the Walk-in Centre in Loughborough, a bereavement group in the village, and was a school governor for both All Orchard and Rawlings Academy. Pauline was mayor at Charmwood Borough Council from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen. A very popular man who carried out hundreds of visits, both here and abroad with the Twinning Association. Once Pauline and I got to know each other, we realised it was probably meant to be. My daughter's sister-in-law worked with her nephew. Some of her and Trevor's closest friends and his work colleague were very close friends of my sister and her husband, and through them I became a friend. As we became close friends, we decided a holiday was called for. Southern Ireland was chosen. I'm not sure that Roscarberry has ever recovered. Among other excursions, we attended a local wake, kissed Blarney Stone, went to pubs, towns and packed as much into the seven days we were there as possible. Trevor tried to keep us in check, but me walking along the sea cliffs in silver shoes and a floaty skirt really tested him. As that was so successful, we then over the years went to the Highlands of Scotland, Cornwall, France, the Isle of Man and Madeira. Another Hillary joined us on some of these holidays, a very longstanding friend of Pauline and Trevor, and also with an excellent sense of humour, most necessary when Pauline and I get together. Trevor was and is very brave to cope with the three of us. We may not always agree, but we were always there for each other. And there have been a few escapades, especially after long meetings. Flaming zambucas in a local pub come to mind. Walking each other home after a restorative drink. A ten-minute walk sometimes took twenty. Brandy and Baby Sham is another favourite drink. Over the past twenty-plus years, we have been through births, marriages and deaths together, celebrating significant birthdays and anniversaries, taking me to the Walk-in Centre because I had not told her I'd broken a couple of toes and ignored them. We have laughed a lot, cried a bit and lived well. Pauline is one in a million. And I, the village and this council have been very lucky to have benefited from her unstinting hard work and care. What seemed like an unlikely pairing back in two thousand and three has won to be the best thing that happened to me. Pauline will be an excellent older woman. Thank you.
If any councillors would like to speak. Oh, sorry, my fault. I just want to stage ahead then. Councillor Boker, sorry.
Can you all hear me? Right. Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen and councillors, I second the motion that pursuant to the provisions of section two four nine brackets one of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, that Mrs Pauline Ransom be hereby admitted honorary older woman of the borough in recognition of her eminent services to the borough and its people. You'll be pleased to know my speech is a little bit shorter because I think Hillary has covered most of or some of what I was going to say. I'm very proud to second this recognition of Pauline's service, excellent service to this borough, especially in health and wellbeing. As you know, Pauline has worked in a variety of nursing fields during her career, including occupational health, nursing, and most of her time was spent working in the operating theatres. Of note, as you have heard, Pauline was actively responsible for opening Loughborough Walking Centre on Ethnol Way, which has been a huge, huge asset to Loughborough in dealing with accident and emergency cases. Somehow I seem to be down there all the time. Pauline also founded one of the first patient participation forums at Barrow-on-Saw Health Centre and was one of the founding members trustees for the Wellbeing Centre in Loughborough with the then MP Nikki Morgan. After retiring from nursing in two thousand and nine, she spent more time helping in the community and, as you've heard, a governor at two local schools. And she's been involved with a number of charity organisations in the local area. One thing I do know about Pauline is she is tenacious and if she wants something done, then boy, does she go after it. On the other hand, Pauline is a very caring person and a very caring councillor and I think she thoroughly deserves this honour in recognition of her excellent service to this borough. Thank you.
So if any councillors would like to speak now, please press your buttons. So I call on councillor Fryer to sum up, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and also thank you to Jenny for highlighting some of the other points that I missed out. I can only reiterate that we are very lucky tonight. We have two excellent ladies being made older women, first time for a long time. But particularly, as far as I'm concerned, is Pauline Ransom. Thank you.
I'm now putting the motion to the votes. Please, could you use your consoles and press the buttons? Congratulations, Mrs Pauline Ransom. Please come forward and be presented with your official honorary older woman robe, scroll and medallion.
Well, that's a bit of a change, isn't it? Madam Mayor, honorary Alderman councillors, ladies and gentlemen, and Jill's friends and family. It's very, I'm actually, I find myself dumbstruck here. That makes it, that's something unusual for me. It's an, this is a great honour for the council to have bestowed on me this evening. I feel extremely privileged and humbled by this appointment as honorary older woman, not older woman as my children call me, of Charmwood Borough. I've always been a community-minded and involved in a number of different charities and organisations before, during and since my time as Borough councillor. It is great privilege to have been able to represent the residents and the honour to have served the council as mayor in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen. I would like once again to thank the council of this honour and my family and friends for joining me on this special occasion. Thank you very much. And that's been done. Thank you very much.
I would like to invite the honorary older women and their guests to make their way to the foyer for some photos after the official civic procession has left the Victoria Room. Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, it is customary to retire and process back into the chamber following the meeting. Thank you.